Motion is carried. Motions from the closed session.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion that we exclude item number nineteen on the personnel agenda and accept the personnel agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, it's probably moved in second that we exclude number nineteen on the personnel agenda as indicated and that we accept it on a vote of another, according to another motion. You've heard the motion is in a discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. At this time, I will take a motion on the employment recommendation from the superintendent. You said that, you said that we, the motion was that we exclude it, right?
And accept the personnel.
And accept, okay, and accept, okay, we exclude and accept, okay, wonderful. All right, so what shall we do with number nineteen?
I make the motion to accept number nineteen.
A second.
All right, it has been properly moved in second that we accept number nineteen on the employment recommendation from the superintendent. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, one abstention, the motion is carried. Approval of the agenda. Could we get a motion to approve the agenda or to disapprove and add something if it's the will of the board, board member?
Make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
It's probably moved in second that we approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Let me look, hold on. On item five point one, the gifted program to found for approval. We received an email from Ms. Kendrick that it had been updated and I have read over it and I don't see where we've done any changes. So would it be possible that we table that until we understand it better or we can determine what changes were made till next month?
I would prefer that we maybe keep it on the agenda and at the time when the superintendent's report is given, then maybe if there is an explanation and you wish to offer a motion to maybe just defer it until the next month for action will be fine with me, but I think that we need a discussion then, Mr. Counsel, if you looked at it and you didn't see any changes.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that all right with you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, fine. So is there any other item that you'd like to add or delete from the agenda? Right, so hearing, your motion, the second, all in favor in that the agenda be approved as is, what is your vote?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So the agenda is approved as is. Good news at this time, Superintendent.
Madam Chair, Board Members, at this time, Mrs. Gail Wade will come forward with the best teacher and student attendance.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the principals forward. We will be recognizing the best teacher attendance and the best student attendance for the month of December two thousand fourteen. We will begin with the best teacher attendance. That's it right here for the month of December two thousand fourteen. That goes to J.B. King, ninety-five point five percent. Best student attendance for the month of December two thousand fourteen with a percentage of ninety-eight point fifteen percent, J.B. King.
Did you take a trophy home last month, Mrs. Wade? What did you take last month?
Student.
Oh, congratulations.
Very exciting.
Yes, I know that you.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Citizens Time.
I have one more good news.
Okay, I'm sorry, go right on, please.
Madam Chair, Board Members, we would like to begin to add one piece of good news in addition to our attendance. We are featuring now a, an alumnus of the month. And we are proud to spotlight for this month of January, Ms. Jennifer Singh. Ms. Jennifer Singh graduated from Franklin High School in two thousand eight as the class valedictorian. While at Franklin High School, she lettered in tennis, cross-country, and wrestling. She furthered her education at VMI, graduated in two thousand twelve with a BS in mechanical engineering with honors, and an emphasis in aeronautics and a minor in math. She holds the women's indoor and outdoor pole vaulting record for VMI. Jennifer's life goal was to become a pilot, which she accomplished after commissioning with the Navy. She is currently a helicopter pilot for the Navy and is stationed in Japan. Jennifer is the daughter of Calvin at S.P. Morton and Maria at Franklin High School Singh. Congratulations to Jennifer Singh for being a captain.
Terrific.
She is on our website and each month we will feature and spotlight an alumnus of the month on our website.
Terrific. And a member of Saint Jude Catholic Church. Very good. So are we ready for citizens time?
Citizens Time, yes, ma'am.
All right, citizens time. Do we have anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, ma'am, he has signed one.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening.
Good evening. And would you give your name, gave your name, your address, please, and we'd like to ask that you're speaking to the mic. We found that, or we found last month that it did not pick up the end of some of the sentences as people spoke. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bell, and dedicated members of the school board. My name is Brent Kemlett. I reside at four one five North High Street here in the great city of Franklin. As I begin my remarks this evening, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your community service as a member of the school board. I know your role and responsibilities are difficult and you might get frustrated at times. Your pay is low and often appreciation which goes lacking. But keep your focus on our students and high-quality administrators and educators and staff and we'll be able to keep Franklin City Public Schools moving forward. So thank you for your service. As a Christian minister, I'm often looked upon as my church's resident expert in matters of God. Let me assure you that I far from know it all and I find that I must count on others to provide insights that I might have missed. It's also important for me to use many different resources to gain the information that I need to make good decisions. I will trust that as we move forward into two thousand and fifteen and years to come, that you all, working in partnership with the superintendent and with the principals and with the educators and with the staff, that you all will make informed and thoughtful decisions regarding the future of the system, especially in regards to the type-two Excel program. Recently, I was made aware that support and instruction and oversight to the systems type-two Excel program was being limited to just one educator. Now, I have worked with Liz Burgess for the past couple of years and I find that she is a dedicated educator to the development of her students. She is a professional, she's creative, and she is driven, but unlike the Christ that I worship, she is not a miracle worker. Surely you all and Dr. Bell do not expect that she will be able to take oversight and leadership and administration and instruction of all of the type-two Excel students at the systems three schools. Again, while Mrs. Burgess is highly capable, she is not a miracle worker. It seems to me that this scenario will limit her in doing many things marginally while missing the opportunity to develop a higher level of thinking and reasoning with students who have shown the ability to do so. At a frequent, at a recent Franklin Rotary Club meeting, gifted and talented students in the community problem-solving group gave a well-organized, professionally-done presentation pertaining to an environmental concern. Under the leadership and direction of Mrs. Patty Rabel, these kids hadn't just thrown this presentation together, they had really thought about it and come to a conclusion and then made that presentation to us. They were able to use their gifts and skills to tackle a problem and see that response come to life. This is more than just teaching to a core standard, it's energizing those students who have shown the aptitude for such learning. Now, when my mom retired as a teacher after thirty-five years in a school system in North Carolina, they could not wait to bring her back on part-time. A lot of school systems do this. Why recreate the wheel? You've got a retired educator in Mrs. Rabel who knows the type-two Excel program, loves the students, and wants the best for our school system and our community. Now, I know I'm not the sharpest pencil in the desk drawer, but it seems to me that bringing someone alongside Mrs. Burgess, whether it's Mrs. Rabel or someone else, is going to be vitally important if you want to actually create a culture of advanced learning. I wonder if you have actually asked Mrs. Rabel if she would consider coming back on part-time? And if you have not done so, why not? The school system's role is to lift all students to a higher level of knowledge and development, and I certainly understand that. And personally, as a school volunteer and community partner, I know that the principals and educators and staff are doing so much more for the students with so much less. But I can't for the life of me understand why when such great strides have been made to turn our school system around, when the tide of positive change and improvement is finally coming back in.
Time rather, we're sorry, but your time has expired.
Appreciate that. I'm sorry?
Are you just about finished?
I'm just about finished.
We do have rules here and I would prefer that we follow those. We don't know how many other persons would do the very same thing. Exceptions are exceptions and I would prefer that you do it not.
I understand that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, school board, Shamar, Madam Chair, Dr. Bell. My name is Teri Zerflue. I reside at two nine zero zero four Darden Point Road in Cortland, Virginia. I am a parent of a fifth-grade S.P. Morton student and a two thousand and fourteen graduate of Franklin High School who is now attending University of Virginia. And just so you know, she got all As. Both have been identified as gifted students through their time at Franklin High School, Franklin, J.B. King, and S.P. And I'm here to speak on that issue tonight. As a member of many advisory boards for this school system, I've read a lot of plans, three-year plans, five-year plans, sometimes the plans help me sleep at night. But recently, I read a five-year plan that made me sit up and pay attention. It was the local gifted plan. As a member of the gifted advisory board for many years, this year I had an opportunity to dissect our current and future plans for gifted education. This plan is an evolution of work done primarily by our gifted resource teachers and their supervisor of exceptional education. The philosophy statement of the education, of our education plan reads, "Gifted education in Franklin City Schools is based on the school division's philosophy of individual worth and individualization of instruction. For gifted students, the philosophy of differentiation of instruction involves the creation of curricular experiences to enhance conceptual abilities, academic proficiencies, or special talents." As part of the operational definition of giftedness, the plan explains, "These students possess abilities differing from their, from those of their peers to such a degree that differentiated educational provisions must be provided for their continuing development as lifelong learners." Franklin City Schools' five-year goal is to continue to study and provide a well-balanced, multifaceted resource program to all identified gifted students, grades K-12, in general intellectual aptitude and specific academic aptitude areas, encouraging growth and development of academic and creative talents. Some details in those objectives. Gifted resource teachers will increase communication and resource availability to staff serving identified gifted students, grades K-12. Gifted resource teachers will provide staff development through professional learning community meetings on differentiation in the regular classroom for identified gifted students. Gifted resource teachers will provide appropriate and differentiated instruction to meet the needs of all identified gifted students in the pull-out resource classroom to include independent research and small-group activities in a variety of subjects and settings. General education teachers will provide differentiated instruction to students requiring extension lessons and activities. So when I got into the plan again this year and I looked at these really amazing goals, I was excited, but the question that came to my mind is, how in the world are we going to do this? If the current plan of reducing our gifted resource teachers to one gifted resource teacher goes forward, how will one resource teacher develop and deliver it, deliver appropriate and differentiated instruction at all three schools in a pull-out research classroom environment? And how will that same teacher do all the staff development required to help general education teachers serve those gifted children in their classroom? Already overburdened with the demands of those who must be brought up to standards, general education teachers struggle with addressing the equally real needs of their gifted students. And even when they have time, most don't have the preparation to handle the special needs of gifted students. So who will prepare them for this? In the past, this professional development was done by our two gifted teachers, resource teachers. Now it will be loaded on the one remaining teacher who doesn't have the time to prepare these regular classroom teachers adequately, no matter what she wants. So we're saying it's okay for our gifted students to be taught by teachers who may not be prepared for their special challenges. We would never put special ed children with instructors who didn't understand their special, who didn't understand special education. Why do we think it's okay to do that for gifted children? Two others exciting elements of the gifted advisory work for me this year is the implementation of individual education plans for gifted students, mirroring the IEPs that every student with special needs has, and the, also the expansion of services to those students with academic aptitude. In closing, John F. Kennedy, more than forty years ago, challenged the logic of this notion, challenged that all of us do not have equal talent, but all of us should have the equal opportunity to develop our gifts. Please allow equal opportunity. It's all these people here asking tonight is equal opportunity for our gifted students. Thank you.
Good evening to you all. Hi. My name is Cindy Mitrovic and I'm here with Callie Philhart on behalf of the gifted program of Franklin City Public Schools. The two of us represent Franklin at Appomattox Regional Governor's School for the Arts and Technology and were former students in Franklin City Public Schools gifted program and still continue to be, to be active participants through the Future Problem Solving Program that was previously led by Patricia Rabel. We are here to express our concerns because neither of us are capable of attending any gifted meeting during school hours due to the fact that we are at Appomattox in Petersburg. Ms. Rabel, however, accommodated our circumstances and was very flexible in holding after-school, night, and weekend meetings, all the while bending her own schedule to our agendas, keeping in mind what times were convenient for us as well as our workload. We have developed very personal relationships with Ms. Rabel because we have been with her through a lot. I've been in Franklin City Public Schools since kindergarten and I have always thrived in the school system. I do love Franklin City Public Schools and I have grown up with this teacher. I'll pass it over to Callie Philhart. Not only is Ms. Rabel a great teacher, but she's also.
Young lady, what is your name?
Oh, my name is Callie Philhart.
And your address?
My address is three oh three Edwards Road, Franklin, Virginia.
Three oh three, did you give yours, Cindy?
I did.
Okay. You gave your address, thank you so much.
Okay. Not only is Ms. Rabel a great teacher, but she is also an inspiration and role model to her students. Both of us have known Ms. Rabel for quite a long time and it's obvious how much she cares about us and the gifted program. When it comes to FPS, there's no, nobody can match her level of expertise due to the amount of experience she has gained through teaching at Franklin for thirty years, over thirty years. We would like to emphasize how important she is, not only to her students, but to the Franklin school system. We hope you will at least consider her for a part-time job so she can continue meeting with us for FPS. Not doing so would be a loss for Franklin City Public Schools and the gifted program. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time does Cindy have? Two minutes, Cindy.
This will be super quick. As an active participant in both the robotics program and in FPS, with, both of which bring lots of positive publicity to Franklin City Public Schools, I am very close with both Liz Burgess and Patty Rabel, both of which are wonderful people. I do not think it's fair to either program to pursue what Franklin City Public Schools is deeming as appropriate in allowing one person to take over in the entire gifted program. I'm just expressing my personal concern for both robotics and for future problem solving, being that I am very active in both. I do see the stress that Liz Burgess is under and it does hit home, especially with robotics. Thank you so much for your time and for your consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Mrs. Kendrick?
Yes, ma'am. Connor McCoy.
Good evening. My name is Connor McCoy. I currently reside at three oh six Fonz Lane, Franklin, Virginia. Which grade do you think the best teachers need to be placed in? K through one, obviously, but did you know that good teachers also, are also required in eighth grade for ages thirteen through fourteen? That is when our last major brain growth occurs and it is crucial that we learn as much as we can then in order to pursue, pursue education for the rest of our lives. While we need to be nurturing this fact, we are completely ignoring it by getting rid of our greatest asset in critical thinking and problem solving that we have. We need all the help we can get if we can, if we want to become good in this area and I apologize, I'm not very good with public speaking.
You're doing well. You're doing well. You're doing very well.
This new plan, in my opinion, isn't very well thought through as it means we lose a day of type-two, which is equivalent to an hour and six minutes. Do you think that sounds like a lot? Well, if you don't, imagine this, in the rest of the school year, we will have lost twenty point two hours. Assuming, this is assuming our schedule isn't interrupted. And we know for a fact, as that stands now, Ms. Burgess has a busy schedule and will likely miss days. The topic of time brings me to my next point, which is writing the FPS booklet, which is by far the most important thing of FPS. Last year, my team won fourth place in state bowl and I fear that without Ms. Rabel's assistance, we will not be able to achieve that again. For Ms. Burgess, as great as she is, is very spread out and can only do so much. After hearing all this, you may be thinking, so what? Why should we just listen to a little eighth grader? Well, I'll tell you why. In the type-two class, which is, we all expert, eh, our expertise is in problem solving, we've all come to the agreement that it is in your best interest to, for Ms. Rabel to come back. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Connor and I believe you know me well by now. I live at one forty-eight Crescent Drive in Franklin, Virginia. My husband Mike and I have six children who are all alumni of or are currently in Franklin City Schools and all of them in the gifted program. I'm here again tonight to request that you seriously consider the negative impact that will occur in the gifted program throughout Franklin City Schools if you move forward with only one teacher servicing the program, classes, and related clubs, and competition teams in all three schools. The talented students in our gifted program come before you, year after year after year, to show you their pride and accomplishments with awards and trophies they have earned through their hard work, studying, research, teamwork, and leadership, both in projects and competitions. This has been made possible through the hard work, dedication, teaching, and mentoring of two teachers in full-time positions who not only spend time in the classroom with these students, but also many hours beyond school time on afternoons, evenings, and even weekends. To expect one teacher now to successfully carry on the task of teaching three levels of gifted programs and to coach three levels of gifted competition teams simply is not reasonable. There are not enough hours in the school day or in one teacher's extracurricular day to keep the pace that these students are accustomed to and the time they deserve in order to continue their programs, their growth, their successes, and their paths to a strong future. Please consider the value of adding a part-time teacher position to help facilitate the gifted program so no one teacher is carrying the weight of the entire program on her shoulders alone. In my mind, the candidate to fill this position should easily be one who is familiar with our school system, the gifted program, future problem solvers, and community problem-solving competitions. Someone with knowledge, experience, network contacts, leadership, and mentorship that in combination with the full-time gifted coordinator can continue to mentor and guide this program for Franklin City Public Schools. It would be a travesty to underestimate the importance of this program in our school system and our community to let this opportunity slip away and to lose the impact this program has on our brightest youth in our school system. I appreciate your consideration and time. I hope you come to a wise decision in favor of not only continuing, but also growing the very successful history of the gifted program in Franklin City Public Schools. Thank you.
Chairman King, Dr. Bell, members of the school board, my name is Colin Bird and I live at eight oh eight Fontaine Street here in Franklin. I have two daughters that attend the Franklin School System. My oldest daughter Angela has been involved in the gift programs since day one. Liz Burgess is a dedicated teacher. She goes above and beyond the duties that are necessary to not only inspire these children but to lead them to do something great for our community. I can't say enough about Patty Rabel. What I've seen her do for these kids and to see them out there in the summertime painting stencils on these drains, getting signatures, doing this work, and they're not, this is nothing like asking them to do chores at home. They love to do this. They're inspired to do this. I think we would be remiss as a community if we were to allow this program to be whittled away. I think young Master Connor said it very eloquently, please bring Patty Rabel back. We have somebody here that's very capable of handling this position. Even on a part-time basis, it's going to relieve the amount of strain you're going to place on one instructor to handle all these programs. I'm not going to take up any more of your time. I think everybody said about everything I was going to say, so I just hope that she can all take that into consideration. As a concerned parent, I certainly am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and we thank all of you. Action to approve minutes. We have school board minutes from December 9th, 2014 and school board minutes for December 18th. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Would you like to move that we approve or disapprove both at the same time? A motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for December 9th and December 18th.
Is it properly moved in second that we approve the school board minutes of December 9th, 2014, and school board minutes of the meeting for December 18th? You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained.
All right. All right. One abstention and-
I also.
All right. You abstained?
Yes.
All right. So, the motion is carried with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 members voting in favor of and 2 abstentions. Thank you. Action to approve bills for payment.
I have a question.
You want me to add?
I don't see Ms. Yates here, so Dr. Bell. There's a payment here for $661.71 sent to the United States Treasury for fees and penalties. Can you address that please?
Yes. Yes, sir. That payment that you see to the United States Treasury was a payment that was submitted in August. When we crossed over to the bi-monthly payroll, we were unknown that we were supposed to send a payment at the middle, but however, we waited to the August 29th like we had always done at the end of the month and we had to pay a penalty. We put procedures in place because we did- we were under the notice that we had to do that, so from here on out, that won't happen again.
So, that was payment for reversing from the one month tag to two months. To two times a month. Yes. Right. Any questions? Thank you. Principals monthly report.
We have to make a motion to approve the-
Yeah, that's right, you do. Action to approve bills for payment.
Make a motion to approve the payment.
Is it properly moved in second that we approve bills for payment? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The motion is carried. Bills are paid. Principals monthly report.
Madam Chair, Board Members, you have the Principals' Monthly Report from each school. Are there any questions at this time?
I have one. No, I do not have a question about enrollment. Just looking at the difference in membership and enrollment, it's interesting to see what both were when school started and what they are now and I think that we just need to keep a pulse on those if we probably can do so. Any other comments? Student liaison update. Mr. Ballard.
Starting with S.P. Morton Elementary School. The Pony Point Store has had its grand opening on December 19th and was a huge success. The Pony Point Store will be open again on January 23rd. Mr. Chandler has given all of the school board members a pony point for your good behavior, so please feel free to redeem your five points on the 23rd. S.P. Morton's hosting Family Math Night tonight at Food Line from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The January Family Reading Night will be held on the 22nd and the theme is "Come Snuggle Up With A Good Book. It's No Much Fun To Read." The students have been deeply involved with testing. We just finished MAPS testing, are currently in the process of PLS testing, and gearing up for Benchmark Number 2. The Second Annual Weeks Academic Awards Assemblies will take place on February 4th where students will be recognized with Principal's List Honorable, Pony Pride, Perfect Attendants, and the Star Student Award. A representative from Bronco Federal Credit Union will be presenting the Spin, Share, Save Program to students on the 10th of February in preparation for the opening of the Pony Bank. The 2014-15 Sex Patrol inductees will be given their badges and belts on the 20th of January and we are very excited to rekindle this program. The Seed Savior Mobile Classroom will be visiting S.P. Morton on the 11th and 12th of February to enhance our science curriculum with a lesson in horticulture. We are soliciting the assistance of male mentors to participate in our Men Making A Difference Program and will have our first meeting on the 26th of January at 6:00 p.m. The inaugural Elementary Laisse-Au Distinction Meeting is scheduled to take place on the 22nd of February for 5th grade girls. On the 6th of February, the reading specialists have organized a sock hop with DJ Jazzy Geary for our Accelerated Reader Achievers. And the PCA will be hosting the annual Sweetheart Ball on the 13th of February. As for JP King Middle School, JP King Middle School basketball team won over Southampton on January 6th with a score of 39 to 26. They are currently 3-0 and this is for the boys' basketball team. The January parents, as partners, had over 175 people that attended. Dr. Andrea Hall Leonard present- presented on the compass and the clock and the children were introduced to forensic scientist Amy Lane. The Students of the Month were Jacob Wallower, 6th grade student, 7th grade student Hadeel Halter, and 8th grade student Shayla Stovall. And the Teacher of the Month was Celeste Vowell, 7th grade Exceptional Education Teacher. There are currently two students auditioning for the Appomattox Regional Governor's School in Petersburg. Four students are auditioning for the Norfolk Governor's School for the Arts. There'll be a writing boot camp that- a writing boot camp started on Monday for 8th graders and benchmark incentives went home with students today. And for Franklin High School, the Student Government Association is participating in Pennies For Patients. The first block class that raises the most money will be rewarded with a free breakfast. And the Pennies For Patients, that's just basically for further research on different blood cancers in teenage students and children, including leukemia. The SOL Academy was this past Saturday and it was a huge success with over 92 students. Mr. Groff's Earth Science Class had nearly 20 students and it will also be held this Saturday on the 17th for students who will expedite retake next week. The PACE Meeting was held yesterday evening and parents learned of new ways to better assist students to become more successful with monitoring their students' progress. We just had our blood drive and over 37 pints of blood was donated and that's more than last year, so it was a huge success. Seniors are very excited to purchase as senior gear as the Hurf Jones representative has been to our school. There's an interest meeting on- for the Governor's School of the Arts on January 21st and auditions will be on the 29th. Winter sports are in full swing. We've had a lot of victory this year. The Scholastic Bowl Conference will attend the 41st Tournament on January 29th. Final exams will be on the 27th and 28th of this month. Hopefully, we won't have to take any of those. And the new semester begins on February 2nd. And I just took my last SOL, so I'm done with SOLs forever.
So, maybe other students heard you say that, what a successful achievement really means when it comes to the SOLs. Great.
There's one thing I would like to address. I'm concerned about the temperatures in the classrooms at school is very cold and uncomfortable and we've had a few teachers and students come into conflict with the dress code because the students are cold and they refuse to comply with the dress code because they're comfortable with their hoods and stocking caps and scarves and things like that and it just causes a huge classroom distraction. So, if you guys could please turn up the heat in the classrooms.
And I think that you have all the people in the house who should be here to hear that and we had talked about that even before Christmas, I think, when we toured Franklin High School. So, if it's still not there, Mr. Phelps, I know that you're concerned about that as well, then we would appreciate you were looking into that.
And one more thing, I'm a very active student in the Future Problem Solvers Program and like the young man said, please bring Ms. Rabel back.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments? Thank you, Mr. Ballard. You're doing a wonderful job. We love hearing what's going- what the things that are going on.
Thank you, Shama. Madam Chair, Board Members, at this time, the Professional Development Log is presented for your purview. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? None. Monthly Financial Report?
Truance Data.
Oh, I'm sorry. Truance Data. Yeah, you do have that. Truance Data. Did anyone have questions or comments about truance data?
I do. I see that we have, let's say, just say, at Franklin High School, we've had 15 meetings held. At what number do we start having petitions filed?
When they- when a student reaches the seventh day and you still have a continuance of absences, so you-
So, you have to set up the second-
Seven consecutive days and then after that, once you get into the 10 days, past seven up to 10 or more, then you look at the petitions being filed. But you can hold meetings to deter- before you meet that seven-day threshold. So, you start basically, well, I know Mr. Phelps starts calling if you miss just one block. Yeah, he makes calls to see what was going on, but those attendance meetings generally are held to deter from having the petitions. And right now, we haven't had but three this school year that have been in front of Judge Brubaker.
Because this is cumulative here. It's not like how many- well, how many- you have 15 students.
Yeah, and it's ongoing because you may get to- you may get to the number from one month to the next. It may cross over.
Right. So, you're not talking about just one student there. Mr. Bell?
Any other questions? All right. Monthly Financial Report? Any questions on the Monthly Financial Report? The Superintendent's Report, you have the four areas that we address each board meeting based on the alignment with the Memorandum of Understanding from the- from VDOE and those areas are Curriculum Alignment, Human Resources Management, and Quality Leadership, Teachers' and Support, Purpose and Direction, and Leadership and Governance. At this time, we- well, by being a short timeframe from December 18th until now, we don't have as many items as we've had in previously, so but in- under Curriculum Alignment, if you have any questions concerning the conference on ELL, then Mrs. Beaman can, if she will step in for Dr. Smith if you have any questions there. Mrs. Wade is here for Human Resources Management. Mr. Edwards is here for Purpose and Direction and I will field any questions for Leadership and Governance.
I just have a question. This is for Dr. Smith. The information received at Excel 1-on-1 Conference in Richmond, has that information been shared with the instructional staff or will it be shared?
Yes, ma'am. What we do, we always come back and we share that with the staff, either in a POC or in a staff development on those half-days or if we have whole days. Yes, ma'am. And ELL also falls under Ms. Beaman's umbrella, so she works with our Exceptional Education Teachers with that as well. Ms. Beaman, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, that's a single comment.
Yes.
I was not in attendance at that particular conference, but I do know that she has shared that information with staff.
Any questions on the Human Resources?
I have a question for any board members. I had one for Mrs. Wade. In several places, you mentioned licensure and the work that is being done, I think in one instance with DOE and then what is being done locally to verify records for the IPAL. Where are we with that and is there anything that's out there that might lead to non-compliance?
No, ma'am. The IPAL report is due January 30th. We have already submitted and have been working on getting that all straight. All of our teachers are 100% highly qualified, fully endorsed in the areas that they are assigned. We have one person that the license has not come back on yet, but VDOE has it and we're waiting for that and I'm sure it will be back before January 30th when the final submission goes into VDOE.
Thank you.
So, we're 100% compliant.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I have one question. The group on JP King Dunn, completed all the way. Everybody.
They have, I'd say it's 99%. Only thing they have to do is the island that comes over top of the overpass there and have a couple pieces of gutters and I did a walk-through the other day and it was raining and have some hiddenness, you know, some things that I found that I wanted to fix and some landscaping to do yet. But they're within their day. They had 106 months and minus non, you know, rain days, so they're still within their way within their time, but it should be done end of the week. Tomorrow should get enough. If we have a couple good days straight, they'll be done. I know. It's been painful, not just for you, but for me too.
You had a leak on Christmas Eve?
Christmas Eve, what happened is they put the gutters up and they put the downspouts on over that particular area right there by the library and the water ran in the mulch and went underneath the windows and went right in. Yes.
When it comes in the building, who pays for the cleanup and who pays for whatever damages made?
They do. That bill was $8,600, so I just turned it up. The roofing company. First time we paid for it because it wasn't their fault. It was our fault. The second time, they paid for it. Because the first time, it happened one time before, but we weren't aware that when they flattened, put a- put a slant on the roof, water never dumped in that flower bed before. After that, we addressed that and it's not where it came in the second time. When they put the gutters up, they dumped, directed all the water from the side of the roof right into that flower bed, so. But I handed the bill to them yesterday.
Let me ask another question. We're in the process of taking bids for Franklin High School?
We already, we haven't awarded a bid. The lowest bidder has been picked. We have the funds of- we wanted to make sure the funds were available since we went past our November 14th deadline and they still are. We can use them, so we'll be awarding that bid next week. We'll sign the contract next week.
Let me ask another question concerning that. We have this long time period that we have spent at JP King because I guess the contract read they had so many days minus 40% chance rain days.
Right.
Is this going to be in the next contract too?
Yes, it's in the next. That's a standard contract for roofing contracts for that size, but we're not doing a tear-off like we did. You know, we did a complete tear-off down to the decking. There's a couple areas we're going to do up there, but not nearly as much of a tear-off. It shouldn't be nearly as much of a problem, but you know, that's a standard contract. They have a six-month contract to do these roofs, so that's where we're at with that. We got it right off the DOE websites in the contracts that they use, so that's standard.
You too, Mr. Cus.
Excuse me, Dr. Bell. Do you have a question in reference to Purpose and Direction and Leadership and Governance? Under Purpose and Direction, Mr. Edwards, I believe, is here tonight. Could you give us an update on the Avid Program?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chairman and to all board members this evening. Dr. Hall Leonard, the Avid Program and fellow board members, we are in a planning process.
And it is coming along very well. We are in partnership with several school districts, Greensville County being one of them. And we attend various sessions and we have made a site visit to Jack Joe at Middle School. And also, we have a planned visit to Landstown High School at Virginia Beach where we sit at the high school level. So we're in a planning process, and the planning process lasts exactly one year. And then we can go into an implementation phase in the fall. But according to Avid, you must be in a planning process for one fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My other question, not sure if this is for Mr. Edwards or someone else, Dr. Bell. Under leadership and governance, I see that we have the visits. You see the Director of Instruction and Accountability Building Principal accompany the VDOE Office of School Improvement, Joseph P. King on December the sixteenth, and I believe also at S.P. Morton. How were those visits? What were the results?
Each month, there is an assigned date when the observations occur. And what the team does, they take those results back to the AARPE, interrelated reliability meeting, which is a technical assistance meeting that occurs each month. The meeting for, was supposed to be held today, but it was canceled due to inclement weather. And once we are there, then we share the results at that time with the committees or with the representatives from VDOE. Also, I think we have, it's not just us that are in attendance. It's, how many other school divisions? Four or five other school divisions that are present that day as well. So it's a, it's a group work and then they share out throughout that time, throughout the day.
When it comes to that, Mr. Bell, looking at the number of schools that went into warning, school improvement this year, a large number, is that broken up because somewhere I read that William &amp; Mary is working with some schools? And it seems as though DOE, is that, are the teams broken up to go to William &amp; Mary at any time?
Well, this, some of the divisions that are part of that CERN partnership, William &amp; Mary already works with those school divisions. We are one of the school divisions that is in partnership with CERN along with, I believe, seventeen other divisions. VDOE basically has meetings throughout the month with all of those divisions that have schools that are credited with warning. Some broken up focus, some broken up priority. For the public's knowledge, there are about five hundred plus accredited with warning schools. So VDOE has their hands full in working with, with a limited staff, working with all the schools in the state. And that's why on the floor with the SOL Reform Committee is working with the General Assembly to look at our testing, what we've had, what we've done over the years since the inception because evidently something is not working. And right now, one of the major pushes from the SOL Reform Committee is expedited retakes for third graders through eighth grade. And then also looking at the progress of students and not letting the SOL be the end-all, to-be-all.
Thank you. I knew it was a large number, and I'm glad that you gave the number.
Excuse me, Dr. Bell, I'm still under leadership and governance. The way this read, it appears to me that a team went to Joseph P. King. Is that incorrect?
Yes, ma'am. The team is comprised of Dr. Smith, Mr. Edwards, ICAO, Mrs. David. Sometimes Mrs. Oakley is there, the principal, and they all go in and they do the observations together.
Okay, so this was held?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yes, ma'am. That was held and then Jack, Thursday was supposed, today was supposed to be the follow-up where they debriefed. Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else with a question or concern? I do have one more. And I think Mr. Edwards, Mr. Phelps, this might be related to the two of you. With us already beginning the second semester, it just seems as though this year is flying so fast. Will we get the course offering booklet from, and I guess Mrs. Francis as well, from J.P. King and Franklin High School before scheduling for next semester, for next year, for next year begins? Because you'll be looking at scheduling for two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And I don't know if you're starting the scheduling in April, May, whatever, but your course offerings will have to be approved by the school board. So how will we get that booklet? Or when will we get it? Will it be March or whatever? Could you tell us what the timeframe is, I suppose, for scheduling for two thousand fifteen, sixteen?
As a matter of fact, this week, we're already looking at our master schedule just preliminarily for next year because we're looking to add some, some classes through Paul D. Camp, which of course, all that will be approved by the board. So we're already looking at a draft version or a preliminary version of our master schedule. We haven't started populating that schedule obviously yet with students, but we're looking at the overall master schedule. As far as the course offering guide, usually how that's happened in the past, I assume it will be the same. The Director of Instruction lets us kind of know when that's due in her office. And then that's presented to the board in, usually in the early spring.
And I think last year, we got it after scheduling. But I think that it would be better if we were to approve it before scheduling.
Right. I think last year, we had several, we had a couple of draft versions because it kept, you know, we were adding robotics at the college and maybe some, a few other things, so it kept coming back. So it wasn't a hundred, a hundred percent approved until probably late spring, early summer. But it was a couple of versions that came in before that. So you're asking me, when is the course offering guide going to be given to the board for approval?
Yes. Because I'd like to see it before sched, before scheduling.
We will work on it.
And we're working on the course offering guide and the master schedule now. When I get the timeline from Central Office, we'll give it to them and move forward with it that way.
And I just wanted to put it out there because we're looking at second semester and the time is just frightening. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Yes, and one other thing, Dr. Bell, under external partnerships, Mr. Phelps just mentioned partnerships with Paul D. Camp. And I know at the appearance of partners meeting, you talked about some new things possibly. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. We are continuously in partnership with Paul D. as it pertains to associate degrees. And right now, we're looking at increasing our general education certificates. The general education certificates, that's where a student has the opportunity to knock out at least one year of college. So that means when they enter college in the fall, they will be a sophomore. The associate's degree at this time, when they enter college, they are a junior. So we are looking to increase that. And we will have talks throughout the remainder of this semester. I think we're going to have some representatives, as I heard last night, at Pace on February the twenty-fourth at the high school that would definitely be talking more about the, Mr. Travis Parker with Upward Bound has an instrumental role in that, as well as Dr. Brady. And the new representative at Paul D., Ms. Pilgrim, will be working with us to increase, looking at increasing our numbers. And we are doing, doing some PR with our eighth graders. So our eighth grade parents will be invited to the next Pace meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there other questions?
What is the day of that Pace meeting?
February the twenty-fourth, right, Mr. Phelps?
I'm sorry.
You always want me to come back.
I think it's February the twenty-fourth.
I think it is. I wrote that down.
February twenty-fourth is our next parent night. Our next parent night and our next actual Pace meeting, which for those who don't know is, is Parents Accessing Their Child's Education, a new parent group that we have at the high school this year. That next meeting is February eleventh because it's always the second Wednesday of the month. But February twenty-fourth is what Dr. Bell's referring to, which is parent night at Franklin High School.
Excuse me, Mr. Phelps. Would you give us the times for those meetings?
Yes, ma'am. Five-thirty to six-thirty is always our time for Pace. And on February twenty-fourth, the time is also five-thirty.
Thank you.
Could we get an email? Could we get an email?
Sure.
About both of those activities?
Yes, I'll make sure you get an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Bell?
I would just like to say that I'll turn that such history as well. And it may, and it's well worth it.
Oh, that's terrific. Do you have any organization at the high school that would be relevant to your going in and talking to students in the ninth grade about the value of dual enrollment?
I'm with the Upward Bound program, Mr. Travis Parker as well.
And talking to other students who are not in Upward Bound. Is it any way, you know, I mean, I think when students tell the story, it makes a lot of difference. And if it were that you could get on somebody's agenda at a club meeting or something and attend meetings and talk about the value to those ninth graders now as they're transitioning into the tenth grade. Tenth grade, of course, they would not take dual enrollment classes until probably eleventh grade. But it would be good if you were to plant the seed.
We have to do that.
That would be great. Yes. Wonderful.
Any other questions on the MOU? The last portion of the additional actions beyond the scope of the MOU? All right, Ms. Wade. Ms. Wade has one.
Good evening again. I wanted to share with you all, we talked about this a little bit at our December meeting, but effective in January. This January two thousand fifteen, we have secured the services of the Background Investigation Bureau, which we abbreviate and call BIB. And they will be providing our criminal background checks for all of our potential employees prior to their being hired, as well as doing our criminal background screenings for all of our volunteers. The online criminal background checks for employees will be completed in addition to the fingerprinting because by law, we are required to fingerprint for background checks for our employees. But we're not for volunteers. So we will be using this service alone for our volunteers. The volunteer application process had to be changed a little bit to reflect this change in procedure. And it's already been revised. It's up on our website now. And any future volunteer applications going forward will use our new process. I brought a copy of the, of the volunteer application to leave with you tonight so you can see the change. But it's a very simple process. The volunteer or potential volunteer goes onto our website, clicks on the link that says Secure Volunteer, and it, it takes them to a screen where they actually input their own information to submit for the background screen. And then it comes in, they're guaranteed to come back to us within two business days, and it comes back so that I can pull that report. So we're excited about that, and we'll be using that for all of our employees and volunteers from this point forward.
They guarantee it within one to two days.
That's a big improvement.
Yes, ma'am. The board members, that's in addition to what we have to do by state law with the fingerprinting. So this report is generally more comprehensive than the actual fingerprinting report. So we would know. And actually, they guarantee one point seven days. The timeframe for it to be back. So we would know.
This is as thorough background check as we were given before?
More thorough. More thorough. More thorough.
Is there anything else, Mr. Dr. Bell?
No, ma'am. That ends the superintendent's report.
Unfinished business, second reading, final approval of the local gifted plan.
Ms. Beaman will come forward with that.
Good evening again. You had the plan in front of you, and I know that, Mr. Counsel, you had a question earlier.
Well, I understand it's been updated.
Yeah, the only update really was the name. In what I do typically, when I'm working with a, a group of people so that we know which document we're working on, we'll, I'll label it. So red is if there's red line still in the document. It's black when I've corrected the red line, and I believe that was the name that was submitted to the board when the name of the plan is the local gifted plan. So we just changed the name.
Questions? I have two questions, if I may.
Sure.
With the change that the gifted program has taken in the last sixty days, has that changed anything that's written in this plan?
No, not really, because what we're looking at is a philosophy of where we want to go in terms of addressing students. We still talk about resource pullout. We still talk about what teachers can do in terms of differentiation. So it's really more of a global look than the day-to-day kind of operations, which the gifted advisory team will be looking at as we go forward. This is more of a global look at the gifted, in terms of the flow of where we'd like to go in a five-year plan.
Dr. Bell? I really don't know how to say this, but anyway, I don't, if, with the conversations.
Excuse me, excuse me. Would you speak in, so I can hear you? Thank you.
Dr. Bell, with the conversations that we had earlier tonight, if, if, if some of those changes come to fruit, would that change the way this plan is written tonight?
Well, like Mrs. Beaman said, Vice Chair Counsel, the gifted plan is the global plan for the division. In all of our instructional programs, we take a close look and monitor all of the progress as it pertains to, is the program or is the vendor or whoever is being effective or efficient? That is what we do, our asset mapping. And we usually do that generally at the mid-year time. That's when most divisions do their analysis. As we do our, look at our four-point-five-week benchmarks, our nine-week benchmarks, instruction is always being viewed. We look at it in terms of three, three aspects. So basically, there is a triangulation. You have a triangulation as it pertains to the skill analysis. You have a triangulation as you look at the average score, average pass rate from a class or student, student's class or teacher's class. And then you look at it on a combined average as we look at, let's say, grades three through five reading, grades three through five math. And we kind of look at the trajectory and see where we're going to go. What we have seen is that we have the, and what we've input is the first benchmark because previously, we didn't have any data from the past years that we could look at what we did last year. And the data that was there was apples and oranges because those were teacher-created tests. Now, we have an instructional team that is, that are creating the tests. As we also delve deeper into the data, we look at all our subgroups. We look at our gap groups. And within those subgroups, we've added tier-three analysis, tier-two, and even tier-one. Now, generally, our tier-three, tier-two is mostly, mostly the tiers that most divisions look at the most. But what we fail to really hone in on is that tier-one student. So that tier-one student is being critically monitored, just like our tier-two, tier-three, all the other subgroups and all of our gap groups. Reason being, this year, where we have such a critical look at our tier-one, where we have made the adjustment with the program and gone to more of a laser light focus from seven hundred students to forty-four at S.P. Morton, twelve at J.P. King, and thirty-eight at the high school. And mind you, the high school had never been served, which is a violation. That is a violation. Franklin City Public Schools could have been cited for that. So now, we have a focus, a more laser light focus on. So now, we have a focus, a more laser-like focus on that population. Now, the reason that we're looking at that laser-like focus on that population is because also, in the SOL Reform Committee, one of the platforms or plights, whatever you want to call it, that they're looking for, is to give school divisions more credit for students scoring above 500. Generally, we have our tier one, gifted kids, type-two kids, score above 500, elementary, they get their medal, but then as they get to high school, they start going the other way. Now, it's imperative that we do not have them going up the other way. You can have a teacher that can score 80% proficiency in their class based on SOL accreditation, but the entire class went backwards in growth. And that's what we're trying to deter. So the analysis, to answer your question, Vice Chair, is that there is more of a laser-like focus, and we put, we are putting the pieces in place in the instructional program to improve the program, to improve the entire process, a systemic process. So we are looking at the big three, which is that triangulation piece that I talked about, and then also more of a laser-like focus on the mastery of learning. And that's where it comes into play, where we have 44 that are being served better than they were served before at S.P. Morton, 12 that are being better served now at J.P. King, and 38 who were never served. Shamar, you have never been served in your four years. That is a penalty. So now, we are addressing high school.
Excuse me. This question is for Mrs. Beaman and Dr. Bell, and I would like to ask the board to look under the local gifted plan. B, delivery of services, Franklin's objectives. With the adjustment in the program, Dr. Bell, let's see, one, two, three.
What page are you on, please?
Okay. This is...
Page eight.
I believe it's eight.
Okay.
Yes. B, delivery of services. Look at bullet three. Gifted resource teachers will provide appropriate and differentiated instruction to meet the needs of all identified to students in the pull-out resource classroom. Should we make an adjustment to that wording, since we've adjusted the program, Mrs. Beaman? Are we actually, are all students benefiting from a pull-out resource classroom? I guess that's my question. Are they all? Will they all benefit from it? A pull-out resource classroom?
Well, this time, we typically have, most of our students are being pulled out and worked with in the elementary, and this is where we want to go. And like you said, we have a five-year look at this, and also, Mr. Counsel, this is a really fluid document, so as the gifted advisory team is working with the document and looking at the reality of what's going on, we can adjust this to make it more in terms of what we're, where we're trying to go. But we have to have a starting point, and we should be looking at in five years, if students are receiving those services and that they are being pulled out, and they're looking at different research projects that they can do either independently or that they're doing collaboratively in a group. And that's one thing that I've seen, that we've, we've done a great job at, and we want to continue those things. So when I'm looking at it and it's saying, "All students," that would be my dream, is that all students are being pulled out, and we're working with them, and they're working on projects, and they're doing things that will take them beyond the scope of what they're simply doing in class, and not necessarily simply doing in class, but really extending those concepts and ideas. So I'm comfortable with it here, because that is where we would like to go. And as a committee, as we sit and we look and we make, you know, some analysis about what's going on, then we can say, "You know what? Let's look at this part of it, and we can readjust this." This is a very fluid document. Back in December, I met with all of the regional directors, and we talked about, as a matter of fact, we reviewed everybody's gifted, local gifted plan, because we're up for state review in a year. So we all said, and we, and we talked about that very thing, and they said, "We want you to get a real global picture of where you'd like to go." And as your committees sit and they work with them to really adjust what's going on on paper. So I, I think this is kind of where we are right now, and as we work as a committee and we continue on and look at that five-year stretch, we may need to do some adjustment, but we really need to have a starting point, where we like to go.
And at no point in here do you specify the number of staff, and nor do you say anything about any given persons. It's all gifted staff.
Exactly, because they could fluctuate.
Yes, yes.
The reason I asked that question, Ms. Beaman, for a novice or for a parent, we even have the public viewing tonight, and if they were to look at this document, we don't want them to misinterpret that currently, that every gifted child may be pulled out for service, but they may be serviced in another way, but they're still getting their gifted services. Am I correct?
You are correct, and we've actually had some dialogue about that in the gifted advisory, really writing it for parents who are looking at it.
Right.
This is kind of the, you know, jargon kind of, you know, the, the real overall global educator kind of look at it, but I, I agree, and I would say the committee probably agrees as well, that we really need to do some other explanations for parents, and we're working on that as well.
Thank you.
I have a question. The two young ladies that spoke tonight that don't have the opportunity during the normal school day, what are we going to do to service them?
One thing that's really interesting is that through the State Department, they really define how we can address high school students in terms of services during the day. And parts of that, the program that they're actually in, attending Appomattox Regional Governor's School, addresses a lot of their gifted needs. So a lot of what they're doing are actually extra things, the, the things that they're doing after school, and we love to have kids participating after school in lots of different activities. However, the real intent of the gifted program is to work with students during the school day so that we can access all students, and not just the students who can attend in the afternoon, on weekends, and that kind of thing.
But we have a large number of students that like this.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Afternoon and weekend, that we have to address. At some point, somebody has to address it.
I agree with that too, but the local plan is really for what's going on during that school day, the instruction during the school day.
And that's what it's been lacking, Vice Chair, our instructional day. That's what it's been lacking. We have, we are looking at a major focus on the instructional day. That's the major focus. And then, of course, we always acknowledge extracurricular. We always do that, because, you know, the research says, the more kids that are involved in extracurricular, they're going to, nine times out of 10, it helps the instructional day. However, we have to start somewhere, and the focus needs to be on our instructional program during the day, because, believe it or not, the state is holding us accountable for, from eight to three, not from three to five.
Are there other questions from members of the board about the plan?
I think you may have answered another question I had, Ms. King. If we approve this plan tonight, doesn't mean we can't make personnel changes later on.
It has nothing to do with personnel by number, personnel by name, it's just a general plan. If you notice, you see staff mentioned, the gifted staff, and it just does not cite individuals at all.
And it's, it is a five-year plan, and it's, you know, I hope we're, we do 100% of these in five years. Definitely, we can grow our program and staffing and whatever, and I do, I do hope that we can get there, but like she said, you have to start somewhere, because you can start, you know, all the time doing 100%.
No, no.
The only thing I would say is that regardless, I understand the instructional plan, but the kids, the two young ladies from Appomattox, and even the kids that do the extracurricular that are in the instructional day here in, in the school, we still don't want to, I know this is instructional, but we still don't want to lose that. We want to keep that extracurricular for all the students that are in the gifted program, for the things that go on at school, so we need to make sure that we don't lose sign of that. We need to make sure that that continues.
I had some questions on page six. Eligibility. Evidence of superior intellectual development measured by performance at the 90th percentile. Evidence of academic performance in core content areas. Evidence of superior intellectual development of student products. Is this from grade to grade? Do we go back and look at this at every, at the end of each academic year, or is it just etched in stone that is continued?
It's not necessarily etched in stone, but it's not something that we review necessarily every year with each individual student. We'll have students who are, you know, found eligible, and they will continue through the program, and as long as they're being successful, we may have some students who have some difficulty, we want to go back and look at some things for them. So it, it varies. It wouldn't be, once you're in, you're in forever necessarily, but it's not, we do this every year, and if you don't make the score at the end of first grade, you don't get to, you know, participate in second grade.
So you don't look at the performance of the students from year to year?
We look at the performance, but we wouldn't evaluate necessarily.
And my reason for asking that, because of the scores, and I said this earlier, at the high school, by the gifted students on the SOLs and benchmarks. I looked at that, and for instance, in English 11, they scored at this, every score, 76. Algebra II, 71. Geometry, 59. Earth Science, 83. Biology, 88. World History I, 81. World History II, 86. USVA History, 77. And these students go in the program scoring at the 91st percentile. So what happens when...
The testing that we typically do is about ability testing, and then what you're talking about is achievement. What has they achieved?
But is there a correlation?
Not necessarily. Sometimes it has to do with the interest of the student, and sometimes it could be a number of different things, that they could be involved in a lot of things, could have just been that one test that one semester. I mean, it could be a number of different things. But in terms of what's in a gifted plan, that's looking at their ability to do the work, and you have a lot of kids sometimes who do not work up to their abilities. So one of the, the charges from the gifted, you know, committee, the team or whatever, is to make sure that we're motivating students to want to really push that envelope and be successful in every factor of their life.
The criterion method, no one single measure may be used for identification. So I saw the different instruments that you use to assess. Now, and then, the SOL is included in that?
The SOL is not necessarily included in that, because it's an achievement test. What we look at is ability, so we'll do portfolio that shows their ability to do certain tasks. We'll look at, I mean, yeah, ability-driven tests. The SOL is really about achievement. If I missed class one day and I wasn't exposed to information, wouldn't necessarily be a sign of my intellect, it would be a sign that I wasn't there for the information, that I wasn't able to attain it, not that I do not have the ability to attain it. So we use all those things, you know, we even use SOLs to say, if we had a student who was scoring consistently at 500, you know, or better, we want to look at that student and see where their ability lies. But there's a different, there's kind of a fine line between gifted students and high-ability students. So we look at all of those things, and that's why we don't use one single measure to, you know, to determine whether or not a child is gifted.
So high-ability, I think that that's what I'm looking at, because it would certainly lead to diversity in our program, I suppose, and I'm get, I'm going in that direction when it comes to the population of students that we're serving in gifted education. And we have students who are exceptionally talented, you know, across the division, and I'm wondering, is there a rubric, a rubric that you use when it comes to showing varying weights of the instruments that are used to identify?
In terms of a rubric, you mean if they get a certain score on a certain test?
Right, is everything that's weighted, yes.
Well, no, it's not weighted. We do not do a weight, because students will show their talent in different ways, and so we consider all of that, and that's why it's really a team and a committee approach to looking at students. So we try to consider all of that. So there's not necessarily a rubric, you have to get this score on this and this score on that. It's more, let's look at this, this child holistically, and then make some determinations about whether or not they're exhibiting giftedness, or whether or not they have that potential to do that.
How do you involve yourselves with those students who go to the Appomattox School for the Gifted and the Tidewater School of the Arts? Are you involved there?
Now, what I've done this year, because this is the first year I've kind of taken on the whole program, I've been attending the Appomattox, the meetings and meeting with staff there and kind of discussing things. And then, Ms. Howard and Vaughn, who's working with me, she's been attending the Norfolk ones, and then we get together and we talk about those different programs, because the programs are actually very different. The arts program is really geared towards the arts, and then the Appomattox School, while it has a huge component of art, also the technology, as well as, you know, some other areas. So we try to, you know, make sure we have our hands on all of those, and attending those meetings and meeting with directors and kind of bringing all that information back.
Should we have a parent or guardian on the committee, your advisory council, from the Tidewater School of the Arts?
I think it's...
I saw Appomattox, but I'm not sure if I saw the Tidewater School. Do I see that one? Is that on there?
I would love to have as much environment as possible, so we can, we can certainly approach them about that.
Do we have, do we have anyone on the advisory council?
Yes.
You do? All right, wonderful.
And they've been really great about working with Franklin and making sure that our students really showcase themselves.
I didn't see that listed as one of the areas.
Well, I know I serve, and I don't...
You do? So would you look at that and see if that's a category on, in the plan? I saw Appomattox, but I don't think that, I looked at that composition of persons for the advisory council, I'm not sure that I saw.
Right, and the reason that it really wasn't there, at this time, we're identifying in the general ability as well as the academic, and so the, the arts, while we're looking at that, hasn't been a huge focus of this program, even though we talked about looking at that, and I would certainly like to bring someone on, you know, to really work with us in that area. But at this time, we're looking at those two academic kind of thrusts, so that's why we really were seeking parents who are part of that.
So could you add that? Would you consider adding that?
I can bring it to the committee, and we can look at that.
And I, I saw the grid in here, but I looked to see, I'm, I'm going to try and attend one of those meetings also, because I'm the representative from the school board, and last year, we didn't have a student, I don't think, or did we? Did we have one last year?
Last year, we did not have a student.
We didn't have a student there, and are we filling all of our spaces this year?
Well, with students, we've been meeting at night so far, I mean, from like five to six, and so I know that they said, you know, when students participated, it was during the day where you had access to students. It's open for that, we, you know, solicited for students to come, and certainly, we can continue to do that, and see if we can get students to come, you know, consistently.
Absolutely.
Excuse me. Madam Chairperson, are you referring to a student on the local advisory committee?
I'm talking about a parent or guardian. Are you on the advisory council?
I'm on the advisory.
Wonderful, then. So, but would you include that as one of the areas, not in our plan? And I think that each year, that needs to be included, as well as Appomattox. Then that way, we keep maybe some students there. We have that...
We, actually, we had a few more than that, four that you reported, but we also have two eighth graders, you're right, and we had some from the high school as well. Yeah, we had eighth graders to apply as well. So they will be...
I do have a question, Ms. Beaman. In reference to Chairperson King, when you were referring to the population of students that are being served, my question is, and it's, the plan, I believe it is a solid plan, Mrs. Beaman, so we do thank you. I believe it's a solid plan. But my question to you is in reference to tests that are being, or assessments that are being used, or for the elementary school students especially, because most of them are identified in elementary school. Are we being careful as to the test or assessment that we use, wherein some may have some biases as to one population versus another?
Right, and we pay very close attention to the state recommendation as well, as in terms of what we use for tests, but that's why we try to use a really broad perspective and not let one item be the reason a child is either found eligible or found ineligible. So we try to look at everybody.
Thank you.
I too think that it's a wonderful plan. I do think that you addressed...
All committee. I would like to thank my committee. You were great.
I congratulate members of your committee. I think Mrs. Godwin is on there, and other persons, and the parents, of course.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there any other question from Mrs.?
Got a plan, now you got to work the plan.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, and that was, and if there are no other questions for you, Mrs. Beaman, you may have a seat. We appreciate your answers very thoroughly. Is there, we need an action regarding the second, the second reading, so we need to have a motion to approve the plan.
I make a motion to approve the local gifted plan.
I second.
It's properly moved and second, that we approve the local gifted plan. Is there any... Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the motion is carried. Thank you, board. The second reading, final approval of staff development plan. Was that the final?
Policy AK, IKFA.
That's it, yes. Okay, I meant, you know, what I was, let me go back to that one.
[inaudible].
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, yes, that's the next one, right? The second reading, final approval of policy IKFA revised plan. Thank you, Mr. Ballard, for tonight.
Thank you.
Tonight.
Congratulations on all your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Yes. Right? I had turned to, turned back to notes and I lost my way, my direction with all of my questions, so we had the second reading and final approval of the policy IKFA revised.
I threw my way a lot, I guess.
All right, is there any discussion? Any questions? Do all verified credits have to be attained through testing?
Uh, yes.
Yes, they do.
They do.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And the ones listed here that are underlined, these are the ones that have brought us in alignment with VDOE.
Right.
We've added all of these as options.
Any comments or questions? If not, a motion to approve, since this is the second reading, would be in order?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve policy IKFA locally awarded verified credits.
I second.
Okay, so it's properly moved in second that we approve the local policy IKFA. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the motion is carried. Thank you. The second reading, final approval of central service administrative performance evaluation system.
Yes, ma'am. This was presented to you all back in December. Just as a summary, this is the performance evaluation system that will be used by all the centers, central office administrators. That would be our directors, our coordinators, and our supervisors, and it's all aligned, the format's aligned with our teacher, our principal, our superintendent evaluation, meaning that it has a goal-setting component, a media review, an annual summative, and it has performance standards with indicators underneath each standard. And so I hope you've had a chance to review it and be glad to answer any other questions you may have.
This was something you got from the state, this is something y'all produced, all of that.
A committee came together, yes, ma'am, this, and we...
They do.
We pulled, we pulled the format from what was currently being used, you know, with the four-point rating system and the indicators, and then we, we looked at several models and came up with standards that we felt were the most meaningful to our, you know, administrative staff and would, would, would be appropriate for everyone across the board.
That's true, and I agree with Mrs. Godwin. Now, for instance, with the teachers and the building principals, we know with the superintendent, we had suggested standards and indicators, but you designed your own for the central office.
Yes, the committee did, yeah. Committee came together and looked at a lot of options and zeroed in, and, you know, so the committee did a great job.
That's good. This may, brings us into even more compliance than probably was necessary when we've looked at evaluation, because we had to do it for the teachers, the building principals.
Ms. King, we have been yard of compliance.
Yes, I'm saying, it takes us to the point of being in greater compliance, you know. This is wonderful, we ought to be congratulated.
Well, next month, I'll be bringing the support staff performance evaluation for your review.
That is deserved.
We're working on that as well.
All right. Is there any discussion, further discussion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the central service administrative performance evaluation system.
Thank you.
It's properly moved in second that we approve the final presentation for the central service administration performance evaluation system. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Great work. First reading, overnight field trip request.
Madam Chairman, you see the overnight field trip request for the first robotics competition?
And this one is at the University of Maryland. Any questions, anyone?
Does this have to be a first reading? Could it be the second reading too, or does stuff need to be added to it?
No, it's nothing needs to be added. You can, you can make a first name sound.
You do need the date of the field trip, I think.
April 1st.
But did you add it?
Yes, ma'am.
It has been added? All right, because when it went out first...
April 1st?
Okay, April 1st, 2004.
2015.
Yes, they surely did.
It was 2015.
Okay, wonderful.
April 1st through the 4th.
Mm-hmm. It was the 2014. I noticed that when I looked at, has been changed terrific.
Is that during the spring break?
Yes, that's my break.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for this to be the final reading or approval for this field trip.
I second.
May I just ask a question? You said for it to be the final, that's your motion that we make this the final reading. Are you saying approve it?
For five, the five, yeah, to go ahead and approve, yeah.
All right. Is there a second?
I second.
It's properly moved in second that we act on this with approval as the final reading for this overnight field trip request. You've heard the motion, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the motion is carried. Please let Mrs. Burgess, that we wish them the very best. Number seven, seven point one, important dates to remember. Is there any discussion? We changed the January 22nd, 2015 date for the Virginia Board of Education Board meeting to our attendant, the Accountability Committee meeting at 1:00 P.M. on January 21st, 2015. We'll all be traveling together from here on that afternoon at, you say 11:15? We'll leave at 11:15, so if you wish to note that, then fine. And since we're all here, how many people are planning to go? We asked that the other evening, but everyone was not here. All right, are we all go?
I don't, I don't reckon. I am not sure at this time.
All right, so there are at least five of us, and I suppose, Mr. Bell, you'll get the van and that will accommodate the other two should they decide to go.
Mrs. King, it has already secured.
Thank you, sir. January 26th through 27th, we have the Capitol Conference in Richmond at the Marriott, and that's the one that relates to the legislative action with our General Assembly being in session. And you get to see and talk to legislators and maybe some of your lobbyists or whomever. So if you wish to go to that, we certainly encourage participation. March 3rd, 2015, Superintendent's Evaluation Workshop, Virginia School Board Office, Charlottesville. And I guess that I, we went to that, some of us. I think Mrs. Walton, Mrs. Godwin, and I have trained for the evaluation. As a matter of fact, my presentation this evening related to that, and I think that we're right on target, and when we come in for our formative evaluation of superintendent next week, then we will see whether or not there are some persons who need to go. If you have trouble utilizing the instrument, then it might be that you need to attend this workshop. It's a very valuable workshop. Business by school board members, do you have any?
I just would like to, I believe we all received an email today from the Paul DeCamp Community College in reference to the Dr. Martin Luther King Day celebration on Monday the 19th. So I would like to invite everyone to come out and participate.
Good. That's great.
I would like to say, I went to the case thing at the high school last night, and it was quite informative. I'm still flailing with the high school, so...
That's good. All right, wonderful. Is there anything else?
Oh, yes, and Joseph P. King always, that's my, my school, Mrs. Francis, you see, I love Parents for Partners. I'd like to say they had a wonderful Parents for Partners, and when you're talking about alumnus, the young lady that presented as a forensic scientist from Richmond, Virginia, is an alumni of Franklin High School. Her maiden name is Henshaw, Amanda Henshaw Lane, is the forensic scientist that participated in the Parents for Partners program, and the students really enjoyed it. She would love to come back and do hands-on, so it's always good when we have some of our own to come back to work with our students. So I commend Mrs. Francis and Mrs. Mita Stratton in the program and Joseph P. King.
Good, wonderful. Anything else? All right, then a motion for adjournment is in order.
Say yes.
It's what happened moves in second, that we adjourn, you've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the motion is carried. Thank you, board members and staff, since you're still here. Thank you all so much.